I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item today is the oath of office. Natalie?
Brock?
Do you have your oath of office with you?
I do. Thank you.
So, are we standing in the right spot? I think we are. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna read and you're gonna read after me. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. By the way, your last name is?
Bury.
Bury, okay.
I, Natalie Bury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to saying.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. I, Natalie Bury.
I, Natalie Bury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
Prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome Natalie. Moving on, any questions from the board on the agenda for tonight?
No.
Are we allowed to talk about it now or can we just talk about it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just have some questions on that. What are you doing now or? When you said you have anything on the agenda, that was one of the things I wanted to talk about. Can I do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm just wondering what generated the need to do this? I'm just hearing some things from people in the school and community people. With the SMART schedule, everybody's at lunch at the same time. It's like 2,000 kids or whatever. And people are going in a lot of different directions. Is that what is initiating the fact that we need to have a better handle on where kids are? What's generating the need for this?
Well, in the proposal for improvement, what we asked so that the specificity of those kinds of rationale were articulated. So the genesis of evaluating high school behavior, students traveling about the building, what a pass system, writing a pass out in terms of the history of what that looks like. Can we be more efficient, school safety and security, kids moving through the hallway. So this particular initiative would, in the minds of our administrative team, bolster school safety and security. You'd be able to know through the software in real time where students are and where they're leaving and traveling in a classroom. In the two-month pilot, because this was piloted last year, the last couple of months of the year, so it minimized classroom disruptions because it has an auto-pass feature. You also can control, as sometimes you know, when you have two students that had previously been in conflict and then their travel patterns. When student, let's say, returns from a particular disruption, you might be able to, you can control that travel pattern. You set a mark in terms of where they go. You can also monitor that they're going to the nearest lavatory in terms of, let's say, I release a student into the hallway and now we're telling them to go to a particular area, a particular class part, and they're not traveling beyond that to something more distant. They can set destination limits for students in terms of where they're going because they're setting a pass. Students in the 910 week, for example, would go to the closest bathroom, as I mentioned. And also through the, let's say, analysis of the pass in a pilot last year, there was a loss and a decrease in lost instructional time. So it is seen as a better way to monitor the building, monitor kids' travel patterns, know where they are as opposed to maintaining our traditional.
Who's tracking it all? Who's tracking all this?
Well, the tracking of Dr. Gregor, correct, in terms of being the cloud, our administrative team has the ability to monitor this in terms of where things are in real time.
You know, I'm new to the board. I know we have one, two, there's three, there's four of us new to the board. And I don't know how, I don't know, I don't know what, and you could jump in, the board members that have been here. And I know I have gone to board meetings prior to coming onto the board. And you know, truthfully, I don't really have a handle on what really goes on in that SMART schedule, what that looks like. I think, you know, we're gonna be having some presentations from, you know, Mrs. Gerber and Annette on the special services, you know, maybe, could Jonathan Strout give a presentation on what that SMART schedule is? What are the kids really doing? How much time is in class? What are they doing during the 2,000 kids that are all eating lunch and going different places in the building? How does that all look? You know, I'm not really familiar with it. And because I'm hearing some things, it might be good to get some information. I don't know how other board members feel, if you feel that's important or not. Some of you have high school kids. You may know more about it. I don't have anybody involved in high school. And I'm really not really knowledgeable about what that program is all about.
And what, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Connie, I agree with you because it's been a while since I had kids in high school. That ePass though, I like the idea of it because in case of an emergency, we know where the kids are and we will be able to get them, like if they need to be a safe place or out of a building. So for me, since we have this big concern about safety, I think the ePass is a good idea. That's just my personal opinion because we're always worried about safety, especially during this whole things that are going, that are going on. And I hope people hear me because I know the mic's on great.
And Connie, in advance of that initiative, when it was, to say, the year prior to its implementation, there were parent meetings, if you will, in the Performing Arts Center where the detail and specificity of what that looks like and what was coming, and Jonathan actually was the lead presenter in that. So we did that with our parent group.
Well, then he probably has his notes. He could just pull out his notes, right?
Yeah.
Do it again?
Yeah.
I will say from a parent of a freshman, and my kid went into high school very nervous about situations. He adjusted to the pride schedule very quickly. When they do the transition from middle school to high school, I know they spend a lot of time with scheduling and everything. One of the things that I noticed is that with the flexibility of it, they can go to all different clubs and it's not a staggered situation. So like clubs don't have to be after school when other kids might be working or kids might be involved in sports. Now they have this solid block of an hour where they can meet and do things like that. I know it sounds overwhelming. I mean, it sounded overwhelming to me too when I was being told about it and then knowing that they could be in all different places at the school. But he adjusted very quickly and I think so far it's been a very positive experience for him.
Also too, I think Scott brought up the issue about the fighting, the disciplinary record at the high school. You know, I did notice that there were a lot of fights involved with the 910 building. And it would be interesting to know where those fights during that period of time, whether it was unsupervised, you know, that time. But I mean, if you think it's possible, do you think Jonathan Strout could do a presentation for the board and the public?
Jonathan is a very good public presenter.
Okay.
And, you know, having been in the room during those nights, it was an impressive display of.
Right. Who was invited to that? Was that, was that, I don't recall the, was it the parents of kids that, okay, yeah, I don't know if it was in general.
It was well attended. It was in the Performing Arts Center. I think we had a couple nights. Dr. Gregor?
Yeah, Mrs. Baker, probably 200 parents showed up for that presentation. There was a recording of a PowerPoint that Mr. Strout presented that's still available. Since that time, there have been minor tweaks in the minutes for periods.
That'll be a good, a good refresher.
So, yes, that's very possible. And if I could just throw in, the eHall Pass is going to replace the current swiping of ID badges that are now being done that do capture the student, their frequency, the duration. But we have no way of knowing if they're going to the correct location and if they're crossing paths with students they shouldn't be doing it with. And it takes a lot of administrative time to analyze the data. So the eHall Pass has a dashboard that's much more powerful and easier to extract information on.
Sorry. Okay.
Dr. Gregor, is it reasonable to suggest that we could get that captured PowerPoint presentation to our board members who?
For the SMART schedule?
Yeah, that are looking to have that review. It's very detailed.
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good. And I hope we're getting on this microphone thing. So when you people talk out there, we can actually really hear you real well. So we're moving on that, right?
We are, yes. There were folks in here last week. And Jeanne and I speak out of turn. We're looking to make that a reality.
Yeah, it's actually an update under the business committee.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So we have a bit of an update.
You got it.
Just to add to that, so kind of, my son actually really liked that schedule because he was able to meet with teachers for extra help during lunch and stuff like that. So it worked out pretty good. The thing I wanted to bring up about the easy Hall Pass was just the due diligence. Again, that's, could be some sensitive data on the students. It is a cloud-based system. Hopefully we, you know, so if they got like an SSE 16 or they're ISO certified, privacy policy, I'd love to look at that if that's possible. Can you guys hear me out there? Yes.
Any other questions on the agenda? Okay, before we open to public, you know, there's been some discussion about us, you know, modifying the public participation session, allowing the public to speak freely about any item during either session. So and it's actually up for first reading tonight. However, before we get there, I do need to make a motion to suspend the first sentence of numbered paragraph four of bylaw 0167. Can I get a motion to suspend first sentence of paragraph four bylaw 0167?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Do we need to do a roll call here or just, roll call's not necessary, is it? We should, okay. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
For what?
Suspend the motion.
Oh, yes, yes.
Mrs. Bury?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. With that, could I get a motion to open to the public?
Still moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have one? Mr. Ron Lucchini?
Actually, Connie, I think that people contacted you or at least one of them was the same person who contacted me. It was a teacher and they had informed me that this ePass or what's it called?
E-Hall.
E-Hall Pass or whatever it is, was up for discussion. And they had some problems with it. And they kinda connected it with the SMART schedule, which they dubbed the Not Too SMART schedule. But, you know, it seems to be, based on what they were saying, that we attack a symptom rather than the cause of the problem a lot of times. And if you really go back to the problems that are inherent within the high school, you gotta go back when they decided to make it one gigantic building. I mean, you know, that horse already left the barn. But then this, this schedule apparently leaves kids. And you gotta correct me because the way this person was explaining it to me and the way, Jack, the way you're explaining it, sounds a little different. But during the SMART schedule, the kids get a 56-minute, I just call it an hour of free time, basically. They eat lunch and it takes them, you know, 10 minutes to scarf down their lunch, 15 minutes. And then they're, they're going places. And that was the impetus behind the eHall schedule at first. You know, obviously the classroom, I gotta go to the bathroom, yeah, that kind of thing. But that was one of the main reasons. And to me, unless you have a chip inside the kid, the, the, the schedule, to me, I don't know, what do they tell the people in the cafeteria? And according to people I'm talking to, there's only like three or four people in the cafeteria with all these 2,000 kids all free at the same time. So it's impossible for, I would assume it's impossible, for the administrator with 200 kids leaving, you know, to go places, to put it all down into the computer. So I don't know if that, if it works where the kid just swipes something and, and he supposedly going to this place. But according to this teacher, and then I followed up with three other teachers too, by the way, according to this teacher, the eHall Pass says Jimmy's going to Mr. Jones for extra help. So Mr., I don't have the proper name, Mr. Libertory, your son may be one of the honor students and he's actually going where he's going. But there's no way of checking on him. That's what, you know, I'm getting, that the kid goes upstairs and there's kids roaming all over the place and they're not going where they're supposed to be going. You know, and I don't fault anybody for that. You know, 1,000 kids roaming, if 1,000 stay in the cafeterias and the other 1,000 are roaming, it's almost impossible. I don't see what this thing does. And then also in terms of the classroom instruction, I asked, you know, because this is common sense. I was over to high school for five months. It was a circus, okay? I don't care what anybody says. I took over a classroom that, that was a circus. But the hallways and things like that, I'm sorry, you know, phones, it's, there, it's just too much. Phones in the classroom and all the teachers complain about it. And of course, when called upon it, they don't want to say anything, like these same teachers who don't want their name mentioned because of repercussions. But I can't see where in a classroom, I said, what happens when the kid goes to the bathroom, you know, he doesn't ask? And he says, no, it beeps. He goes, boop. And then I said, well, what if you're working in groups and you're working with a certain group over here and now the beep goes on, now you gotta go over there and, you know, check who's beeping and where they want to go. And the person I spoke to and the other two people or three people that I talked to today said that, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a pain in the neck and a disruption as opposed to the old days, and I know you can't do this now, where, you know, Jimmy says, I gotta go to the bathroom. I go ahead, hurry up, you know, get back here in five minutes. And if he's not back in five minutes, he doesn't go to the bathroom anymore. You know what I mean? Like that, I know that's thrown out the window. You can't do that any longer. But, and I also thought, like what Ms. Clancy said, well, if in case of a, like a, God forbid, a school shooting or something like that, you would know that the, you know, there's three kids in the bathroom or whatever. That, that might, might be good if you had a, you know, a decent police force taking care, if you have the Uvalde police force, it wouldn't matter where the kids were. But, you know, assuming the Washington Township police come on the scene and somebody takes over, yeah, it might be good to know that there's four kids who are supposed to be in the bathroom. But you don't even know that they're in the bathroom. See, that, there's no way of charting where they're actually going. So that seemed to me to be like the problem with, with it. And the 56 minutes, I just think that the SMART schedule, I don't know where it's a, you know, she mentioned the clubs. I don't know where it's a benefit to keep kids today in a classroom for 56 minutes. They can't read more than two paragraphs, for God's sakes. You're gonna keep them in a classroom for 56 minutes? We have adults that can't read that long.
Thank you, Mr. Lucchini. Could I get a motion to close public?
Still moved.
Do we have any information on the system and how it works in general that can be shared with the public just to ease some of their concerns?
So it uses GPS technology. The lab monitor has to check the person into the lab. If it's not the right location, then they would notify an administrator. We do know who's in the bathrooms. That's, that's the point of it. It does track to the very person by interfacing with ClassLink, which is the API we use for almost all of our applications. It's on the student laptop. It's not on the student's phone. And it's much better than what we're currently doing. Even what we're currently doing is better than what we used to do. With the swiping of the badges, it does capture the data, but it's cumbersome and requires a lot of intervention from the lab monitor. And it's only good where the scanner is. This is good for anywhere in the building.
And if I could follow up, when, you know, you're the interim superintendent, you come in and you hear that there's a request for this type of initiative, then you ask whether there was a pilot and then you hear that there was. So you make sure you evaluated it and analyzed it over the course of a couple of months at the end of the year and were reflective. And then the technology capabilities that you hear from a person like Dr. Gregor and others in administration at the high school, you throw your support behind something that you think is good for kids.
If I could also mention, we're looking to pilot it at middle level too. This is not just something to, to address the unit lunch.
Questions, comments? Anyone else? No?
Please for clarification.
All right. Motion to close public?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to committee reports, negotiations personnel.
With negotiations, we have a.
With negotiations, we have a, the WTEA is at impasse and we have a meeting coming up on August 10th. That's all.
Questions, comments? Anyone on the board? No? Student activities?
Last week, our media person had the vendor look at our communications problem. And this person will be looking into correcting and upgrading the communication in the board for the entire boardroom, including the podium there and for our administrators. Colonel Lumpkin and the other staff in the AFJROTC are seeking to rename the Military Honor to Bob and Eileen Abbott Military Honor as they were instrumental in starting this program. Additional information is to be inquired by Mr. McGee. Update on the superintendent search was given. A meeting with HYA is scheduled for tomorrow, July 20th at 6 o'clock. Also discussed was the use of a website or a Facebook page that the community can get information about the superintendent search and disseminate other information to the public. A reunification plan was discussed, putting forth additional safety measures for each of our schools with protocols in every classroom. A proposal was for the continued eHall Pass, which we already discussed. And a proposal to change the name from the Polygon Club at Chestnut Ridge Middle School to Coding Club, so students will know what the group does and lead to more members. Mrs. Pollard also gave information about various ways that our school community can raise monies for the American Cancer Society, one which included a walk at Cooper River Park on Sunday, October 16th at 5:30, and a Phillies baseball game scheduled in late August. Discussion of the board policy for public participation in board meetings and the suggestion to change this policy so the community can be given five minutes in the first open to the public and the second five minutes to open to the public has been addressed.
Thank you, Elaine. I'll report out on the business committee. Elaine, you stole a lot of my thunder, so I won't repeat that. But we talked about the gender-neutral bathrooms. The committee spoke about specific bathrooms that are already being used as single-use bathrooms with a process in place for students to access them. We discussed an additional meeting with administration to determine if there is an additional need at this point in time and to develop a plan for more bathrooms to move forward. The business committee also discussed the Whitman Storage Building. The committee discussed a resident's concern with the storage unit at Whitman. There's a need for, there's a need for storage space. Also, the unit is not likely to be converted back to a classroom space due to the, due to the age of the building and the work that will need, that will be needed to do so. We discussed options for moving the building, but would be unable to move for various reasons. We discussed cleaning up the area around the building, painting it, and providing better lighting around the building. The committee also discussed the budget timeline, surplus, and budget to actual. Administration explained various requirements in relation to the budget due to recent news articles that prompted questions from the committee. We also talked about the public, the policy for public participation at board meetings that Elaine already covered, so I won't go into that. We discussed the finance agenda. The finance agenda was discussed and various items that will be on the regular session agenda, but are not yet appearing on the, on the agenda, the current agenda. We also discussed additional SEOs. The committee discussed recent conversations with Washington Township Administration regarding a proposal to increase the number of SEOs so we may eventually have one in each building. The logistics and of this and the cost is currently being discussed. We also discussed the reunification update that Elaine alluded to as well. The committee also discussed microphones in the boardroom that Elaine discussed. And finally, we discussed the RFPs for the legal and negotiator services. The proposal's open next week and will be shared with the board electronically for review. That's the report of the business committee.
So I have instructional affairs committee. We had a lot of the same discussions or similar discussions as far as the reunification plan and also the officers that are, we're looking to phase in over the next two years. One of the other things discussed was the use of collective response graphics, CRG, which is a software program that allows the police to have highly detailed maps showing the inside and the outside of the schools in case there is some kind of emergency. So that was discussed. Also, a high school foreign exchange student from Italy and some proposals for improvement. At Chestnut Ridge, the art club led by Mr. Hall is planning to paint new murals in the sixth grade hallway to make it more welcoming and exciting for the students. Also, under discussion, a collaboration between seniors, high school seniors, and Grand Lock terrorists to help in two different ways. One is to fill some of the many assistant positions at Grand Lock that are difficult to fill and to provide option two students with real-life experience. I did not realize as option two students, they have accrued enough credits to leave after the unit lunch so they could go to Grand Lock to help with things such as lunch and recess duty. And the students have to be in good academic standing and vetted by the district. It would be for two and a half to three and a half hours per day. And again, that's just under discussion right now. We looked at the high school graduation policy, which moves the number of credits necessary to graduate from 120 to 130. This is more easily achieved through the pride schedule because of the rotating class schedule and won't require an increase of staff or extra classes. We also discussed the health curriculum, which is being revised. Dr. Gregor and Mrs. Gerber have been meeting with community members and teachers. They're hoping for a finish with the K5 rewrite in mid-August, not sure yet exactly, in order to run it by parents, community members, and board members. The school district will be using materials we already have, no purchased materials, and our website will also have information in the curriculum as it does with all curriculums. There will most likely be a parent night. We discussed possibly in October. We are reminded that parents always have notice and an opt-out option for lessons of a sensitive nature, just as they have in the past. Middle school transition was mentioned. There are three more teachers for Orchard Valley, so there will be enough to supervise the number of sixth graders. Mrs. Gerber went over the ESEA, that's Elementary and Secondary Education Title Grant. She explained the different areas of this grant. There's four different areas that the grant money is used for. And each year, our district does allot at a specific amount, but that changes yearly. There are stipulations on how the money is used. One way would be to hire one-year positions funded by the grant for students who are not considered special ed students but have the highest academic need. not considered special ed students but have the highest academic need. There was approval for the Nurses Guide and Nurses Service Plan for the 2022-23 school year, as well as approval for the athletic training protocols. Policy on public participation also, as we discussed in all of the meetings, was talked about. And that was about it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Questions? Sure. Yeah. On the instructional affairs one, I thought regarding the new health curriculum, that in addition to the October presentation, we were going to try to do something in August.
Yeah, I think I'm going to do something to the public.
I think we spoke about something at one of the August meetings.
Yes.
Right.
And I'm just... I'm breaking down, I'm still working with the writers. I don't kind of provide the thing. I don't know if there's any... So I'm... Maybe I'm probably the writers after the...
In August, okay. I just want to make sure we lose sight of that. Okay. Great.
Any questions, comments? Anyone else?
Yeah, we've got a couple more.
Sure.
On the SLEOs from your committee, what do we need to do to advance that forward? So I know, like, when do we think we'll be able to vote on that and act on that?
Well, having gone through committee and seemingly get full support, finalizing a funding agreement between the district and municipality, which has already begun, I've already spoken to Chief Gershig a couple of times, just in terms of him knowing it's something that we're discussing, because likewise, and the folks that they have in terms of their committees are looking to have that. So that... We're looking to move forward with that in terms of reporting back out ASAP. And so you know that a timeline, it's a shared funding process, right? In terms of salary on the district side, in terms of supplies and the like on the municipality side, we already have those in place, right? We have the school resource offices at the high school, and we have four among the other 10 buildings. So we're talking, you could do as many as six over multiple years. That would not be something that would happen in one year. And ultimately, after, let's say you did it and you were able to identify funds, let's say you were able to do it in two years, then at the end of that initiative, you would have a SLEO in each of our middle and elementary schools, all 10, and then you would also have your two school resource offers at the high school. That feels good in terms of coverage that we currently don't have and not shared. So that's a front-burner initiative that we're looking to bring to closure. In terms of a timeline from start to finish, once in agreement, in terms of the police side, advertising, interviews, hiring, training, you're launching three months. So now they're looking to get... They're really looking to get that shared agreement next month.
Okay.
At both of, let's say, our meeting and their meeting in final form, then take off with the various processes and so forth, okay?
And Jack, just to your point, the first, you said three months, so that would be the first three, and then next year would be the five.
Yes. Yeah, if in fact we... And that's what the goal is relative to what they're looking for and us, you know, being very diligent in funding, and we're working with Janine and her folks on that, that you would have those six over two years, right? Three and one, and then that same thing would duplicate itself next summer.
Great.
So that, you know, that would be considered a high priority.
Right.
Okay.
The CRG integration and charting technology?
Mm-hmm.
Can that interface with the EZ... The E-Hall Pass type system? Do those two talk to each other?
I would know that answer here. That's an answer I can get.
Okay.
Okay? And report back to you.
And then one more. The... Ryan, you talked about the discussion of the gender-neutral bathrooms. Are we anticipating any action or anything we're having to build more out, or do we think we're in an okay position now, or are you still evaluating?
Yeah, I think we're, you know, based on that meeting, we identified a need at this point. I mean, I know there were still some discussions to be had, but I don't think there were any action items as of right now.
Great. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, moving on. Any old business from the board? Old business from the board?
Yeah, I have a question about process. Right now, we received documentation from eight firms, law firms, that responded to the RFP. And the question I have now is, how are we going to move forward with it? You know, there was some discussion, we're not going to interview all eight, but we may interview some of those firms. Is it going to be a committee that's going to do it? Is it going to be the full board? Where are we going with that?
That would really be up to you guys. So if you were going to interview, most of the time, it takes place in the business committee if we're doing interviews. If you wanted to do it at the board level, you could, but you'd have to advertise a meeting. So you'd have to have the time, you know, you'd have to have the time to give that notice.
I don't know how my fellow... Other fellow board members feel, but, you know, I think that this is a pretty important step that we're taking, and probably the full board should be involved. You know, we have some new members and everybody on board, not just a few. I don't know what other people feel. I mean, I know personally, I'm on the business committee, but there's some people that are not on the business committee that probably could offer a lot to the discussion. So my feeling is, all of us should be involved. I don't know. What does everybody else think? Chime in.
Connie, I agree. I think it's a big decision, so I think all of us should be in on the decision. We should all be present.
Okay. Is everybody pretty...
Yeah.
Okay. That being said, who then contacts the firms to set up the interviews? Does that come from you, Janine?
I could do that. Sure.
Okay. So we would want to set them all up probably in one day if we could, right? Or no?
Yeah, well, if it was going to be the full board, like I said, you'd have to pick a date, advertise the meeting, make sure, you know, it works with everyone's schedule or as many people as possible.
Okay. You know, we have... I think individually, we all should be looking through those documents. We have a board meeting coming up next week. You know, unless somebody wants to do it, I would be willing to try to coordinate who has available dates, you know, depending on who we want to interview. You know, we want to interview two or three, you know, but I'm not sure until we actually look at it. So, you know, does somebody else want to do that, or you want me to do it to try to see what dates everybody has available? So we could give a couple of dates to Janine to contact these firms, once we know that, I mean, get the ball rolling with it. Does that make sense?
Do we have a sense of, like, the number? I mean, we won't know that until later this week.
So I was just going to mention that we do have the number we opened today, and Elaine created a... So where you guys go to look for your agendas, there's a business committee for next month, for August 9th, I think it is, and we created that so we could upload all the proposals that we received. So you all have access to that right now, so you can go and start looking through what we have.
You know, we may look at something in a particular firm that takes them right off the list, based on some things that they might be doing. And then there's some that we may say, they really look pretty interesting, we want to interview them. So... But we all have to do our homework before next week so that we have an idea who... What firms you like? And who do you think you might want to interview?
Yeah.
And I'll work on getting dates.
Yeah, I think to that point, just kind of being a novelist in this area, are there any thoughts or recommendations as things we should be looking for when we review the documentations? You know, maybe the size of the firm, the size of other districts that they're serving? Anything else that would come to mind from the board?
Well, I was just thinking, do we have a cover letter that will meet the criteria that we're all looking for? So maybe we can create a cover letter, and then we could check the box of everything. Everybody has a different perception.
Well, you know, I mean, one thing that jumps out at me, if a firm's giving money to, you know, board members, I don't want that, okay? I mean, that's... Go off the list.
Very good, Connie.
Okay? So, I mean, so...
I think it's a good idea, because I think size, right? You want to make sure that they have adequate size, that they got good references, reputable coming up with a criteria, because it'd be nice if we could take the eight down to maybe four.
Exactly.
And only got to interview four of them.
Exactly.
And also look at the districts that they are serving now, so we can get a sense of how the other districts feel about that particular law firm.
Right.
Well, they should have references, right? I mean, when they include at the RFPs, they should have references that we can contact.
Yeah, I did notice, they do show which small districts they're working in.
Yeah.
That gives us an idea, big districts, small districts.
Just... Can I just add one more thing? We'll also add the original request for the proposals that we put out there, because it does list the criteria in there, so you can kind of see, you know, what the criteria should be. But then again, when you're reading it and you're looking at, you know, the size of the districts they service, are they in the area, you know, a lot of times, they give real good descriptors of the team that would service us and what types of background they have, types of cases they work with, so you can, you know, see if there's a variety of people that could handle all the different, you know, situations that we have.
Janine, your experience, once the board interviews and makes a decision on which firm, what's the turnaround time with that, basically? Once you say to a firm, you know, we want to sit down and, you know, have a contract with them, what's the timetable about how soon they come on board?
I think for the most part, as long as you make your decision, it could be approved at the following board meeting.
Okay.
Obviously, there'd be some kind of, like, transition time, like we're talking about making a list of current cases, so we can decide if that's, you know, what number of days that is as we get closer to making a decision on what we're doing.
Right. Has Capeport gotten back to you? The district has come up with a list. For the other board members, there's about eight... There's about eight cases that are out there that are being done. And my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the board is the one that makes a decision whether or not the current firm will continue with those cases or the new firm would pick it up. And when you think about it, you know, if, for continuity's sake, if the firm has already been involved in a case that's been going ongoing for a year, two years, let them finish, because a new firm's going to have to, you know, go back and re-educate themselves to what's going on, and that'd be very costly. So, you know, I was glad to hear that what we have is about eight cases, and you're waiting to hear from Capeport from their end, correct?
Yeah, just to double-check that there's nothing else on the radar that I didn't list.
Right. So I guess, once we get that information, we'll make sure all the board members get it. And so, you know, I was happy to hear that, that we're not talking about 50 cases or something, you know? So that makes it pretty easy, you know?
Janine, so I just want to just double-check. So the proposal will be on the next business committee meeting?
If you... Well, I simply did that as a way to... Because these documents are so large, it would have been impossible to email them all to you.
Right, right.
So just the easiest way to do it is through Board Doc, so we just created the business committee. Whether or not it happens in August, I don't know that. I just thought that was the best way to create that, so that... Because every board member has access, not just business committee.
Right, so it's not there yet.
It should be there.
Yeah, it's there now. I saw it. And that's what I'm going to... I'll contact everybody and get some dates for this interview process. Now, look...
So wait, just to put a bow on this, so we're going to... So basically, we're going to have one week as a board to review all of the RFPs. We'll come to next week's meeting and have a discussion as executive as to who we want to interview. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that can be done.
Okay. I just want to be clear. So we all agree, we have a week and...
And in the meantime, I'm going to try to find out from people's schedules what dates you have.
Okay.
And then let Janine know, give her a couple of dates, and then once we determine who we want to interview, we can get that ball rolling. Now, we have... We'll have nine board... We have nine board members now, thankfully. Is everybody going to be able to make it? Well, if they don't make it for the interview, then as long as we have the majority of the board members, we move forward.
Yeah, we'll just have to move forward.
We move forward.
No, I like that timeline. I think that works for everybody here, so that's what we should do. All right?
Now, how about the people that aren't here? How are you going to do that? Are you and Elaine going to reach out to say Stacy and to Tasha about looking at those documents on the computer?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll reach out to the absent board members, let them know. Tasha's actually on the phone. So I can...
Tasha's on the phone.
Yeah, I can reach out to the absent board members, give them the timeline, and then we'll have the discussion, and then we'll identify some folks to interview in next week's executive.
Okay.
You can tell them to call me, too, if they have a question about where it is.
Got it. Got it. I'll probably do that, too. That's what I do.
Okay. Anything we're missing? Anybody think of anything that we're missing or anything now?
No, but I think it's good if we come up with a checklist of what we want to look for in the next board solicitor, too.
Yeah.
As we look through the different ones.
Right.
All right. Any other old business from the board? All righty. Can I get a motion to vote on the report of the superintendent, item one?
Still moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Buery?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Could I get a motion to vote on policy items one and two?
Still moved.
Hang on a second.
Brian, I have a question on the one policy. That's actually the only thing I really got through.
Let's get a second first. We're going to second first, and then we'll open up a question. Second. Second? Any questions?
Sorry. Yes, I was looking at the dates. I think we admitted 2023 on accident, because it looks like we crossed off 2024 under... It's right at the first page, letter A, one B. Year 24 is crossed off, or year 23 is crossed off, and it's... 24 is there, and I think in one A, you need to include 23. For whatever reason, 23 is missing.
If I could, Mrs. Grimaldi, just look at that, just report out. Would there have been a need for the one A?
When does this take effect?
I'm sorry.
Which class is this going to apply to? The class of 2024 is going to need 30 credits, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. In a first and second reading, we have a strike-through, so you know clearly what the change is. And then in the second reading, that strike-through would disappear, and the 23 would disappear, and 2024 would remain, and you would no longer seek the strike-through, because then the policy would be in final form. Okay?
But is that the part you have a question on?
I just was wondering why 23 is not included anywhere. To me, it looks like it should be above, because it has 2020, 2021, 22.
Is that because they're seniors?
So Dr. Gregor, that seems appropriate?
Mrs. Buery is correct. There is a section where she makes the year.
All right. Look at this. Making major contributions here. So we'll make that change. Good job. So... And that's why I have a first reading, so now you make that adjustment, and we'll have that corrected for you.
Perfect. Any questions, comments? Anything else? Roll call?
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. Could I get a motion for student activities, item one? Anyone?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. Could I get a motion for human resources, items one through 43?
Still moved.
Hearing second?
Second.
Hearing none, roll call.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. Could I get a motion for finance and facilities, items one through four?
Still moved. Second.
Any questions, comments?
Yes. Yes, I have a question. So on two through four, my understanding is, these are tied to the ESER grants, correct? Right? Okay. When I looked at the contracts, they looked like they're three-year contracts. Do they, does the ESER grant cover the period of which the life of the contract?
I'll let our director, Gretchen Gerber, respond.
No, it's just recommended that they provide that, should you want to continue services. It's a standard procedure, but they know it's only a one-year contract.
Okay. So we're not obligated to those contracts?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion pass. Okay, moving on. Any new business from the board?
Yeah, I have some new business, but I wanted to, I wanted to, I want to ask for forgiveness here. I should have brought it up sooner, but I just want to, I want to ask this. I noticed that we had two counselor resignations and two teacher resignations, and I'm just wondering, I know that, you know, reading in the paper, a lot of districts are losing people, they're going to other places. I'm just wondering, you know, is that the case, that our people are leaving for other jobs, do you know? Or did they hit the lottery and they're resigning that way? Or, you know, two counselors at once, that seems like almost a lot. Anybody know anything about that? Why people are leaving? Is it, is it, is it, should it be a concern?
I can say generally, honey, that, you know, people are just taking positions elsewhere for a variety of reasons. So, I don't know if it's really salary-based, but it might be an interest in just a different area, or different level, or, you know, that's exactly for the counselor. But, of course, jobs are pretty, you know, they're, they're open now. And there's possibilities, maybe we're closer to where he's live, or, so there's just a variety of reasons. Nothing specific for those particular counselors. Hope that helps.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, Mr. McGee, if our administrators can kind of keep track of, generally speaking, we don't really have a lot of people resigning, but just because of the nature of where we are and what's happening in other districts, can we kind of keep our ear to the fact of why people are leaving? Are they leaving because they're not happy working here? Are they leaving because they need, want more money? Not that we have to report out on all of them, but I mean, to get some kind of sense if this is going to be a pattern. It may not be a pattern. It, you know, just might be unusual that we happen to have four people right here in the middle of the summer leaving. But, you know, just so that we're aware, because I know they do, we do exit surveys or something, people tell you things, just to kind of keep track of it.
Yep. Answer's yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will say-
Because I have regular contact with all of our, all of our principals.
I will say, and this is not related to Washington Township, but just general in teaching, as being an educator, COVID threw so much of a curveball, in general, towards what teachers have to do every day, and that's just globally. You know, I've seen a lot of teachers that I know just leave the profession because they're burnt out, and it doesn't necessarily reflect on the school district. It just reflects on the climate of our country, of, of everything that students have gone through and adults. So I'm sure that we're going to just see that, sadly enough, with the profession.
Also, under new business, it's sort of new business for me, because I'm new on the board. I have a question for Dr. Alexander. Back in the fall, there was a survey done with the staff, the parents, and the students. I know you did a presentation, but have you formulated any data from that survey? What the parents said, what the kids said, what the teacher said? Have we received any report on that?
So, we do have the data, and tomorrow is our equity retreat. We will have the opportunity with our equity council, our admin, our community members, and teachers. They'll be reviewing all of the data, looking at our strategic goals.
So that's coming up already? Tomorrow, you said?
Tomorrow.
Oh, wow. How about that? Okay.
Yeah, so-
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so we do have that.
That was quick.
You know, we're trying over here, we're trying.
Okay. I have two things for, really, for new business. Something that I became aware of, and I think, you know, it's, it's, it's really, you know, hats off to our district, where we are trying to utilize during the summer to provide our teachers with training, professional, professional development. Now, the one thing that, that is difficult, that we have not really moved off of the fact that if you, if you put in a six-hour day, it's $95. I don't know if you, you know, you have a lunch in there, and a half-day is around 40-some dollars for the professional development. Here's what I want to throw out for discussion, and what people might, might think or not. Number one, the fact that I would, I guess, is it, Dr. Greger and Mrs. Gerber, you're running the professional development this summer, where people are going to say whether they want to go or not, if maybe you could keep track of how many people actually participate. Yes, the $95 is not much, but what I see as a big benefit is that you're going to have to provide professional development during the school year. Now, a teacher is going to come out of the classroom, we're going to pay for a substitute that we have a hard time getting. So, the more people that take advantage of doing professional development during the summer is, is, is an added advantage to us. The $95 really turns out to an annual salary of $27,000. So teachers in the classroom, the very, the lowest teacher on the guide is making double that or more than what we're paying. I'm trying to think out of the box, and this is where I would want some discussion from the board, if, what you think about this. I remember years ago, when computers were first coming into the schools. Right now, we provide credits for teachers when they get college, you know, they go back to college, get a master's, wherever the case might be, and they move, they move along the guide. They go from a BA 15, BA 30, masters, masters 15, masters 30. Now, back when the computers were coming on the scene, teachers that participated in training were able to get credits to allow them to move across. I'm not saying you go for a $95 six-hour training, and you're going to get a full credit. But I'm just wondering if somehow we could connect that, that along with the $95. That if you, you take so many, so many classes, you're going to get a credit, and then that builds up over the years, and you have an opportunity to, to move on the guide, it goes with your pension, the whole thing. And $95 is not a lot of money to get, to get somebody to come in for professional training. Yet, it's so important, it's great that we do it, and I, and I'd rather see it in the summer than losing class instruction. So I don't know, what, can we do something like that? Can we think about it? Do you think it's something that would, would maybe get more people involved? What's people's thoughts?
Honey, I can tell you, in the beginning, I took the summer workshops, the $95 a day, and I know that I-
When was that? You've been retired how long?
Yeah. I'm still the same amount. And I stopped doing it, and so did a couple of other teachers that I know of, because we're saving the district money, because they're not having to pay a sub. But yet, basically, at that time, that's what the subs were paid. And so, I, I feel that if you're taking your time to take a course or a workshop in the summer, you should get that hourly teacher pay. That's, that's my opinion. That's the reason why I stopped doing it in the summer and started doing it during the school year. I hated being out of my classroom, but I'm sorry, my time is valuable, just like anybody else's, so just, just-
What can, what can we do about that? Is there something we can do about that? Is there some way that we could raise that rate? What kind of money are we talking about? You know, how many people do you have signed up? We're keeping you guys busy tonight.
I don't think, I don't think it's working.
Speak up.
Is that better? There we go.
Yeah, speak up.
I'm pushing the buttons and nothing's happening. Sorry. So, we do have a lot of attendees coming in the summer. We have different trainings. Some of them are more than one day. So, for example, I have a training that's four consecutive days, so that's $95, so $400 for across that, that week, roughly. We do have that, however, I do know in the past what you're talking about. I don't know, I don't have the history of why that was removed, but I believe that that's something that's contractual. That's what we've been operating under. So we've been operating under what's been in the contract, so I would assume that would be, have to be something that's thought, have to be done through negotiations.
Yeah, that's accurate. You know, for, for this particular year, you know, the formula is in the budget, you know, in terms of the dollars. It comes out of the curriculum and instruction department budget. If you were going to move in some other direction, it would be a combination, I think of, I think I'm correct, a negotiation piece would have to be in there, and then a budgetary item would have to appear going into the 23, 24 school year for the summer of 2023. So.
So, this was in the contract before and has been removed? I'm-
Are you talking about the credits, you mean? It was never in a contract. It was never in a contract.
It was, I think it was a practice. I don't know what happened to it in the past, that would be accumulation of the additional credits.
Are you in agreement that that would be something positive for teachers?
I, I think if anything, you know, to attract teachers to come in the summer is a positive thing. Just quite frankly, it's difficult to find substitutes. So, the only time I can really entice people at this point, especially, you know, this past year, I struggle greatly to have professional development during the year. And I would love for teachers to come in the summer, so anything is okay.
Well, you know, we have our numbers person here, Mrs. Rector. We, we save money. We got a pretty good amount of money when we, when we, when we budgeted for 3% in the health cost, and we got some money back. I mean, we have some money that we could add to this $95. I mean, I don't know, what, which, how, how much are you looking that we're going to be spending on this professional development?
Honey, isn't that negotiation?
Yeah, and you would have to look at the number of people that we would expect and kind of like do the calculations, so.
Correct. And, and we kind of budgeted in the, with our plans in November for, you know, this coming year, based off of that, off of that number. But that's something that I definitely think we should explore in the future, for sure. But that's the, you know, the budget we planned, with, within mind, you know, how many days and how many people we might need for summer.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is, we can't add money to that? Is that what you're saying? We can't add money? Because we budgeted a certain amount, we can't give more?
No, that's not, I think what we're saying is, it would go through the negotiations process, and we would definitely, the budget is what it is for the summer and the contract, but it's, according to what I'm hearing them say, it's definitely something we should take a look at.
So it's in the contract that they only get, they get the substitute rate?
Connie, you're engaging in a public discussion of negotiations items on TV. I think you should stop.
Okay, all right. Well, so, anyway, what about the credit? That, that's not in the contract. The, the credits towards taking those summer classes, credits that you could earn. When, when can we talk about that?
In the negotiations committee would be a good spot, Connie. I'm sorry. Push talk. There we go. There we go. In negotiations committee would be a great time to discuss that issue, but not in public.
Okay, all right.
Because otherwise, it compromises the board's position, and that's unethical.
All right. The next thing that I wanted to bring up, I talked to Jack about this, and I want to see how, what the other board members feel about, about this. When I, when I was listening to the, the Texas report, what happened at that school, one of the things they pointed out, that the teacher had put in a request to have that door lock fixed, and it never got done. And what, basically, what they said is, you know, some of the things that happened out there, all the districts should be looking at, at, at those things, and what could they do better? And something I was thinking about, and nobody's perfect, but I know when I worked in a school, myself or my colleagues may have put work requests in. Sometimes the principal had to go to bat, it wasn't getting done. And I'm just wondering if something like this could, and the, the procedure ob, obviously, it's just a suggestion, but the procedure would, would be administratively handled, but something like this, that, you know, if Connie Baker put in a request to have, and this is only dealing with safety, the door locks, another door in the building, something that where somebody could get into the building, where there's something's not safety, is safety, you know, safe. I know, a couple of years ago, I recall, our district, district spent a lot of money and time fixing a lot of doors. A lot of our doors weren't working properly, and obviously, they probably are working well now. So what I'm saying is, if I notice that I'm having a problem with my door lock, as a matter of fact, I was just talking to a retired friend, she said, she, the administrator went to her door and, and opened it up, and she said, "How come you don't have this door locked?" And she said, "Because it doesn't work. I tried to get it fixed." So, when I was telling her this idea. So, anyway, so, I would, I would send that work request in, it would go to my principal, then from the principal, probably would go to the head of maintenance, Mr. Schoenfeld. He, in turn, would have to inform the superintendent, or whoever the superintendent designates. Then every month, the board, just like when we get the HIB reports, we will get a report that there was a safety issue on July 19th. It got corrected on July 20th, or July 21st. And we will be able to see how many things had to be addressed that month, and did they get addressed in a timely fashion. Because I think the safety is extremely important, and I think that that would send a message, and it gets a high priority. I know everybody's busy, there's a lot of things on your plate, but when it comes to safety, we got to, we got to streamline and make it, and make it happen. I don't know, what, anybody's thoughts on that, or you think that's overkill, or what?
Connie, I know that, that every building does a lockdown drill, where the superintendent, I have to say, the principal, has people going around to making sure that the doors are locked. So hopefully, that would be, if there's any issue, it would be turned in, because that is very important, especially during the lockdown drills. That's the only drill that they do that would guarantee that the doors are locked. Other drills are like, where they have to go to a certain place in the building, or the fire drills, but there are all these other drills that are, have to be done monthly. You're probably familiar with that from being at Orchard Valley, you know, those years.
And if I'm understanding you, Connie, just the, is there a procedure in place currently, a process administratively, where if there's a, I don't know, a faulty door, a faulty lock? What, what's the current procedure, I guess is my question? You know?
Well, what I'm saying is that, that there is a history, okay? There's a history at times, that because, you know, we've got 13 schools, a lot of things, there's, it piles up. So, somebody might, like that woman in Texas, put it in a week before, and then it, it didn't get done.
Right.
Okay? My, my point is, when, this, I'm, I'm not talking about, you know, a light bulbs out, I don't care, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when it, it has to do with safety with the doors. And if that happens, to streamline it, that it goes right to the principal, to Bob Schoenfeld, back to the superintendent, and we get a monthly report, how many times we had, we had to address a safety issue with the doors. Maybe it'll be zero, okay? But, but that, that will assure our teachers, our parents, the board, that it's being done. Just like we get HIBs. Every week, every month, we get the HIBs to look at, something like that.
Connie, are you referring to like a work order summary?
Well, it, it would have, it would have a report. You know, at Orchard Valley, this teacher did it on this day, it got corrected this day. It would be like a printout.
There is, there is a work order, sorry, there is a work order that you can access. I'm just speaking for, and like, I've been retired a couple of years, that I know for a fact, if there was an issue in my classroom, no matter what it was, I would tell the custodian, and it was taken care of within the same day. I don't know, it was just because of our building, and, and because we have custodians that work really hard. I can't tell you that for sure, but that was my experience.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we're all saying the same thing. It, it almost sounds like, you know, just given the, the current, where we are as a society, you know, the, the added emphasis on safety, you know, how do you escalate those types of safety issues on like a work order report, I guess is the question. Is that something that happens at the, at the, the school level?
Is that something that happens at the, um, at the, um, the school level? Who's responsible for it? Is it the principal? And to your point, Connie, I, I think for you, it sounds like you want some better communication from administration to maybe the board, just so we can kind of ensure that that's been happening. I'm, I'm just going to make the assumption it's been happening, I mean, I don't know, but that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, you know, what, what got me started to think about it was what came out in the report in Texas, and also the fact of my own experience, that, that because the, the district is so big and there's so many priorities, that sometimes things may not get done. And God forbid if that situation happened. This way, it ju- it just, it just nails it. Because, listen, if, if we took care of all those do- listen, if we took care of all those doors, and next month we got, we got like 100 doors, that's a problem. I would expect we wouldn't, we would get maybe one report on it. That's what I would, I would think. Hopefully, we don't have that issue, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it, I mean, like a summary of, it might be good just to have a summary of open unresolved safety issues each month. You know, as, I, I agree, what you're pointing out is critical. But there could be other things like, you know, staircase that's not properly secured. Me, from, as a board member, I would like to know if there's unresolved safety issues so that we can take action. The other thing regarding doors, I don't know if there's a way we can alarm them. I go to a lot of places where if you prop the door open, it's going to alarm. I think that would be a great thing for us to look at because I, I think there is an issue with doors getting propped open. Right, or somebody opens the door that shouldn't be open during the day to let somebody in, being able to get an alert, uh, would be a very good thing.
Is, is there a committee that could probably, uh, you know, work with administration and look at the current procedures? And if there needs to be some tweaking or some adjustments? What, what committee would that work in?
Janine and I are looking at each other, we would agree business.
Business. All right. Let's, uh, let's add it to, as an agenda item, I think, for business, and, uh, we can report back to the, to this group. I think that's a starting point.
Okay.
All right. Uh, anything else for, uh, new business? Hearing none, uh, can I get a, um, motion to open to the public? Could I get a, uh, second?
Second.
We have any requests from the public? Any, uh, no? Could I get a motion to close to the public?
Still moved. Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, folks, thank you.
Dr. Jackson, Jack McGee, uh, thank you for meeting you through the means.